Okay. Chris Collins speaking in order at seven oh nine. And I believe this to the flag of the United States of America and into your public, for which you stand. One nation under God, and in this world with liberty and justice for all.
So I know that the minutes were very, very minimal during our last meeting on the twenty eighth of March. But if anyone does not have any information or changes to minutes, could I have motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion through the regular minute from Tuesday, March twenty, two thousand twenty three.
I'll second that motion.
I'll in favor.
Hi.
So welcome, everybody, both online and person. We are very happy to have all of you this evening. We always encourage participation because it makes this so much more interesting than just talking amongst ourselves. So could I have a motion to move the old business on our agenda?
I'll make a motion to move all business listed as ever gotten on our agenda ahead of the agenda item number four, community input and part of the topic.
Is it the entire?
Um, just that one.
Seven A, seven A, sorry.
So I'll make a motion to move all this in seven A. Um, ahead of the correspondence and community input, um, agenda item number four on today's agenda.
Now, we would love if everyone would stay for the whole meeting, but the reason why is that. Ah, sorry, we have to hold up the sold on motion. I'll in favor.
I, I, I.
So we would love if you would stay for the whole meeting, but in we recognize that this time is valuable, so we move that up. All right. I think all of us in this room and online are in agreement that the very small class size of the incoming sixth grade is less than I think. And I believe that we are all in agreement that combining the fifth and sixth grade classes is the least desirable option. And it is at the very bottom of the list of options. So where does that leave us and what are our options? So there are a few. So the first that we looked into was the possibility of Swamp Scott sending a few students in grades five and six to Nahann on a lottery basis or any other equity basis. If option one was well received, the question became could Nahann parents opt to send their children to Swamp Scott in grades five and six if they wanted? Well, it's not surprising that options one and two were not well received by Swamp Scott. We also asked if they would be allowed to take grade six for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year. And they are open to that. So to that end, we will be having a meeting. If it works for all of us on Thursday, April twenty seventh with the school committee who were in Swamp Scott to discuss this possibility.
I'm sorry, though, I'm not allowed to say it, okay?
Not yet, but you could be.
Yeah, sorry.
And of course, the other option is to continue our current model. And keep separate fifth and sixth grade classes and combine them when they are appropriate for socially emotional. So those are our options. So I'm going to open it up. For course.
I'm supposed to say my name, right?
Yes.
Ah, Kim Pashlan, being one oh seven Fox River. Um, my concern right now is at this point, we have five, I believe, in the sixth grade, correct? Um, we have nine total, I believe, in the fifth. I already know the four students that are leaving. So that is going to leave grade five incoming with five students as well. Um, so that's a really big concern of mine. So we're essentially mirroring what sixth grade is for these fifth graders. And then if siblings leave, which I believe, I think there are two from the fifth grade, then that's going to leave us with three students and five students at best, which is eight for two grades. Um, I do agree with so many of your opinions, such as the budget. It doesn't make sense for the budget to have two teachers. I totally get that and I understand that, but then it comes down to, but what's best for our kids? Of course. Um, and then it comes down to, well, we're going to keep essentially eight kids here for until they go into, you know, seventh grade um, to meet with these other kids and they're only going to have eight kids and they're going to be completely overwhelmed. But then it comes back to, it comes back to these kids right now. And then I think about how it's going to affect the other grades and we don't want to lose five and six and I understand that. But they have really healthy numbers. And selfishly, my child's in fifth grade, so it's what's best for these kids right now. Um, so I just wanted to kind of point those things out. Thank you.
Uh, my process will go through with like everybody's need for them responding to questions that was exactly what I think of it soon. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. So I guess like a subpart question would be, so now we're talking about how the sixth grade would be part of a conversation for Swamp Scott, right?
Correct.
But now we're down to probably five kids in fifth, so where does that bring them? And how are they considered in this?
Could they be included in that?
Could they be included in that? Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Would you like?
No, I.
No, no, okay. Would anyone else?
Hi, Anne Manady, um, one twenty two Wilson Road. Um, I'm a member of Nahann Education, the Nahann Education Foundation, but not here representing them. But um, I became aware of this issue at our last meeting. And I just wanted to come and speak um, as a parent who's had um, two children go through the Johnson School um, through the sixth grade and then matriculated into um, the middle school and our, the high school in Swamp Scott. And also as a mom of a second grader. And um, I feel very strongly that the fifth and sixth grade should be maintained at the Johnson School. Um, because from my kid's perspective, you know, as a sixth, sixth grader, the sixth graders in Johnson rule the school. There are so many opportunities and one of the things that my kids got to experience that I feel like if we're sending sixth graders over to Swamp Scott, they're going to miss out on the Gettysburg Address. The, the Lowlands Map Award, which has been given um, to a Nahann sixth grader um, for over a hundred years. Uh, the Science Award. Um, the opportunity to be class president or vice president. Um, these, you know, being involved in Van, these are all opportunities that I know they will not have the opportunity to experience at Swamp Scott Middle School. And I can tell you that um, when I first moved to town and I found out that the kids in the heart went over to the middle school later than Swamp Scott kids. There were a lot of our kids going over in seventh grade versus them starting in fifth grade. It worried me to be, you know, because I felt, oh my gosh, how are our kids going to do? And, and I'm here telling you that in, in fact, extends their childhood to stay in the heart through sixth grade. And it's not for nothing. And quite a few Nahann children end up being valedictorians of Swamp Scott High School. Out of the last three years, we've had Nahann students be valedictorian. Um, in two, two thousand and twenty one and also in two thousand and twenty. Um, so if you look, we don't have historically the statistics, but I know that there are many Nahann children that are valedictorians at Swamp Scott High School. So um, I just wanted to give some background and backstory for some parents who might not have older children who've gone through Johnson School. And, and my daughter, who's a freshman at, at Swamp Scott High School, her class throughout, you know, all of, of Johnson was about twelve kids. And then by the time that she graduated, we got a couple more kids, it was fourteen kids. It wasn't a two class either. I mean, obviously, it's not um, as small as, you know, seven or eight kids, but um, I'm just here to say that I really hope that there's some way that you all in the administration can find a way to make the incoming sixth grade parents happy. Maybe it's, you know, a, a part-time teacher that is just as native towards the sixth grade. But there is something really special about sixth grade at Johnson School. And, you know, I can, I can say that candidly, having two children who've gone through the system and also looking towards the future of having a second grader. Um, in second grade, there are two classes, so you know, definitive. Point to have, you know, a large kids in like four years that are in the sixth grade. I, I really don't want to see the kids go over to Swamp Scott because also physically, I, I don't think it actually makes sense. Um, it would make more sense to have sixth grade maintain here and have a teacher for the sixth grade.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I know you're done.
I mean, so Mark Martno, twenty three Sherman Ave. Um, well, respects the best, as I voiced last week, the best thing for our students, our rising sixth graders. Five students that are left is to go over Swamp Scott. I sincerely thank you for listening to us. Um, and you know, as, as an educator, whatever I can do to support, if that means being present at potentially speaking, if you think that's a good thing, um, you know, I'd be happy to do that. Um, you know, I, I'm very excited at the possibility for, for my child. Um, who, as we know, is the only girl in her class and would probably be again next year not to have that experience. This transition to Swamp Scott is challenging for our students. I can only imagine how challenging it's going to be for, for my child. Um, who's already having challenges in the school environment. So thank you so much for listening to us. I really appreciate it, to be honest. I wasn't sure if there was a shot. So I am very, very hopeful and whatever I can do to support, you can count on me for that. Thank you.
That is participating online that would like to speak. I'm on.
Oh, you are?
Oh, sorry, Jana.
Oh, that's no.
Nobody.
I'm sorry. I don't know what the holes are, so please tell me if one's stepping out of one. But um, name and address. Kim Pashlan, one oh seven Fox River, proudly. Um, but what would be the option of? Because I do understand the point of like using fifth and sixth grade. And I understand you with the only girl because I'm the only girl in fifth. And now we're going to be brought down to about five kids next year as well, so we're both going to be in the same boat. Um, but what is the thought process or, or is there an option for possibly allowing Swamp Scott kids to come here so we can keep fifth and sixth grade healthy so we don't lose it for the future?
I posed that same question about Swamp Scott children coming here as an option. It wasn't well received by the superintendent. It was thank you, but no thank you. And the reasons for that, honestly, I think declining school numbers. I mean, Swamp Scott is in a decline as well. That's not very surprising. It's a shame that they're not more open to the idea because I love, and I know logistically it presents some challenges, but there are parents out there that I'm sure would feel more comfortable with their fifth and sixth graders going to an elementary school versus middle school. And so I personally love the idea, but again.
So this was my friend, Elise Sajia, because she used to live in Swamp Scott and said that she would always love the opportunity at the time to send her a child here.
Well, that's great.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'll say one thing and I'll shut off. I swear. I mean, I hear what you're saying about the experiences that our sixth graders could have and the value that could be in that. But I also look at Swamp Scott transitions in fifth grade, don't they? Um, and more and more middle schools, the middle schools I work in transition in fifth grade. You know, and if we're talking about what's best for our kids, transitioning at the same time as their peers might make more sense long term. Um, you know, I have two kids in second grade, so I feel like, you know, I'm, I like that big class, but at the same time, you know, I'm thinking about what might be best for our kids long term.
Yes, and that's a, a long-term discussion that would be like community-wide. We're just looking at short-term today for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty.
With an I, with an I, I'm sure, you know, um, Gina, is anybody trying to get in?
Yeah. I was like Debbie. Debbie, would you like to?
Hi, thanks. Debbie Uskattigie, twenty five Spring Road. Um, I want to thank you, school committee as well, um, for listening to us uh, in the last meeting um, and exploring a lot of different solutions. It's very much appreciated. Um, I know you mentioned upfront that combining classes would be the last option. So I guess I'm just curious to know, is that officially like scratched off the list? Because if not, it would be really helpful to actually have a plan as to what that would be like. Um, we, we have very, very few details about how the curriculum would be handled. Um, so that's just my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. I just want to say, Mark, um, I think my daughter is friends with your daughters. Um, respectfully, I disagree. Um, because, you know, I'm on the other side of it and I'm so thankful that my kids were able to be in an elementary school through sixth grade. I mean, I'm not for nothing, but my son lived in Santa Claus until he was in eighth grade. And I think that, you know, I mean, there's something about, there's something about Nahann that is special. And I think that um, if you talk, I was very concerned like you were, you are. And I spoke to several parents um, who had children who were in my, you know, older children than my son's grade. And the consensus was that Nahann students do really well transitioning over in seventh grade. Because as a, a lot of us know, a lot of the sports already have co-mingled. Because, so they already have, you know, if they're playing sports or if they're doing dance or other activities, they're meeting kids in Swamp Scott and other communities through their activities. I don't know. I can only speak from my own experience, but um, having, looking at it from the, from the other side, Nahann children do really well with interest in transition in seventh grade.
Lauren Schrelock, seventeen Collins Road. Um, thank you all for all the hard work that you're doing on this topic and in a very timely manner. I know that it's hard. It's a hard topic to work on so quickly. Um, I would just like to say that um, I have an inherent bias toward keeping the kids in the elementary school as long as possible in regards to preserving their, their youth and their, their um, elementary school experience. But I would also say, you know, transitioning to the middle school is, is different for everyone. I think um, you know, certainly when it comes to a long-term decision-making about fifth and sixth grade being here versus Swamp Scott. I respect that that may be a different uh, discussion. And for these, these really small cohorts of students, which seem to be exceptionally small, if we're talking about incoming fifth and incoming sixth, potentially going down to you know, literally five in each. Um, I think then the discussion about what's best from an academic perspective, in addition to social, emotional, you know, is, is one to be had. And then um, I appreciate the idea of considering this as, you know, simply a short-term solution. Um, and, you know, the information about the incoming death being potentially equally as small um, is good to have. I appreciate, you know, your consideration on, on both fronts.
I'm sorry, and then I'll stop, but I just, I have. Kim Pashlan, one oh seven Fox River. So the two options from what I'm understanding are lottery-based for fifth and sixth.
Well, it's not an option if, if, if it's not well received and it was not well.
So it's not well received at all?
Not at all.
So what are our options right now? Just from understanding.
So our options are that we keep grades five and six as they are.
Okay.
Independent, that we combine for that move grade six. So there are really three options. So.
I apologize, but I, I thought that I understood that if. Grade five was in the same. Number as six. Then that would be considered as well for, um, a lottery. Did I misunderstand that? I have, I'm sorry.
This, when you say lottery, what do you mean?
In terms of, in terms of the first option that I, I personally. Terms of there being some kind of a lottery, so for Swamp Scott, it's.
As, as far as we know, that's off the, the Swamp Scott kids going to be here is off the table from what we.
No, that's not, I'm talking about our five is in form there.
So we're exploring with them whether sixth grade, um, can go there next year because of the number.
Okay, but then we had so we were right into it because we were going to be in the same number.
Well, that's not the information we got from, that's not the information we received from the school and we can only go on the information that we're getting from the school, which right now does not have the fifth grade. At that, at the number that you. Said earlier, right? Like we know the sixth, the fifth grade to have more students, so we have to operate there until. Until formally, um, there is a different number, but right now the number is, it's nine.
It's nine that we know of now. Obviously, you, you're taught to be.
But, but then the next number is going to be next. Year when we're here and we're going to be less than the.
So I would say that like, we can only operate with the number that the. We don't, we cannot operate.
But I already know that one counts, we're already down to eight, so we're not.
And respectfully, I, I know you've been a mom and I hear stuff outside too. And one of the hardest things about being a volunteer on school committee is that you have to live in two man, so while I hear that, the best thing that those parents could do. For you and for all of us is to tell, um, the school if they are planning to recruit other kids, right? And if they aren't, and I wonder if some parents are waiting on this decision. So that they know what to do, right? Which means we don't know what. So we all have to kind of get through this together. We can't, we are moving as, as Lauren said, as lightly fast as we can in difficulty complicated times. We're going to be meeting with the other school committee on April twenty seventh. That took some huge work, relational work on twenty's part with the other superintendent to pull up. And, um, we're going to talk to them and until we talk to them, we don't know for sure what all the options are. The only person that said we're open to this is the superintendent of schools in Swamp Scott.
Excellent, but so what I just understood though was you said that the only the sixth grade was an option. Because originally I thought you had said fifth and sixth grade if the numbers. Were comparable. And then, and then the last meeting as well, um, it said it could be open for amendments, so I'm not sure what happened. Sense, but I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get all the options.
No, and I understand that, and I really do appreciate that. But at this point in time, looking at grade six for an offer to Swamp Scott, that's not to say that we wouldn't be open. To grade five. But we have to go with the numbers. As of today, and the numbers as of today, I have nine students enrolled.
Okay, I, I thought you just said grade five and six, that's really good. Thank you.
And for grade five and six, I did originally approach the idea of having. Um, grades five and six move from district to district, but it was shot down.
I, I apologize, I thought you said that at the meeting, it was stated in grade five and six, thank you.
Um, Chair. Of, could I make a better way of saying?
Yes.
Thank you. At this point, since the school committee has not had the conversation with the school committee. Swamp side. It is not, it has not been determined whether we're talking about six. Or fifth or sixth. The priority is obviously sixth grade because of the number that we know of them. That doesn't mean that that changes, it won't be. The conversation. But one of the things I want right off the table out of everyone's mind, this is the concept of an option or a lottery. If we don't have a fifth and sixth grade and they go to. Swamp Scott to the middle school. And someone's unhappy there, we can't fix it. Because we won't have a fifth and sixth grade.
Right.
And I, I ju- I just need to say that. Because it may happen. Someone may go there in a school of seven hundred students and say, oh, my God. My child is floundering, I want to go back and there's no back to go to. And. I talked to the chair about that. And Mark, you're going to smile at this, that's probably illegal. Because we have to educate children who live here. So we're going to probably have to figure out with the attorneys how to, how to make, how to allow the parents. To, um, free us of that obligation because we can't do both. And I think it's an important thing to say early. That, um. You know, there can't be two. Two, two parents who want sixth grade in, in Swamp Scott and two who want sixth grade here, you can't. You know, that just won't work because that just exacerbates our problem. Makes the number smaller. I hope, I hope that helps out, Chair.
No, it did, thank you, Toby, and I'll take it. One more comment and then we're going to close community correspondence unless there's someone that hasn't spoken that would like to speak.
Um, Pan Manatee, one twenty two, uh, Wilson Road, one thing that I will say that. I recall my kid saying when they did transition to Swamp Scott Middle School. Is that it was definitely a ramp up from going from, you know. Two teachers, um, to like seven different teachers and I feel like. As a seventh grader, it's a little, you're emotionally more mature, um, to deal with that than a fifth grader. That's my perspective.
So unless there's someone that hasn't spoken that would like to speak. We're going to close correspondence.
So anybody in the chat?
I sure heard that.
So thank you, everybody. You could hurt. And the attorney. Could I, I add, um, just. An opportunity to think it's. Opening number is, um. You know, one of the things that came about was that though. Right now we have an outbound class of five. As a school, we should accommodate and encompass the concept. That we will have a grade every now and again. That would be this class size and so it's important. That we develop a plan at the school. To have that social, emotional learning, have that, um, grade, grade. The span of curriculum across grades that are appropriate. Um, and then make that part of our community so that if it does happen, it's not such a. Outlandish idea for combining classes because what I heard from last meeting. Is that people were very opposed to it because they just didn't agree with it, they didn't understand it, they wanted to know what the standards, which are all good things and that takes time. And I think we need to invest time in that concept.
Very well said.
Um, I wanted to just add two things, um, that I think are important, just for folks to hear, one. Is that, um. In, in any of my fellow school committees, feel free to disagree with this, but. While. This responsibility is an important piece of, of the obligation, your school committee, an essential piece of what the administration of the school needs to keep track of. It was effective, it's not a driver and I think in the narrative, um, there, that's been a little lost and there was a concern that this decision of potentially. Combining business, sixth grade was only motivated by finances and I, that is not true. And I think it's important for parents, I would want to know that as a parent, um, uh, in the heart, um, and so know that. In the, we're looking at what is the most responsible thing to do with a small class and what is the best thing to do for our kids? Is the driver. Um, and then making sure that, and then looking at the budget and figuring out what we need to do to be able to afford those options. So that is one driver, parent, um, parent knowledge of an implementation plan and, um. Uh, consensus around, this is the direction we would go regardless of the direction that is, is another driver. And then the biggest driver is like, what is the best educational practice for our kids taking into account academics and social. So those are some of the things we had considered in the past. And will drive us now, like what is going to be the best scenario for our kids? If we get to a place where, um, we are thinking about sending over one or more grades. It will affect how we construct the Johnson School and we will look at all of the ways. That we can keep and maybe even enhance and empower. The elementary school here, right? To be the best, most world-class, um, school that it can be. Right? But it may mean that some things are different, you know, if the fourth or the fifth grade is, um, king of the school, right? Like there are places that we can still do that, but it may work and feel different for a while, so we're going to take that into account that came up last night at the working room. So I just felt it's important to sort of say that out. Um, so that folks would know that we really are paying attention to these things, we are driven by what is going to be best for our kids. To give them all the advantages that they deserve in, um, in their education. Thank you.
And I'd like to say this as the parent of a sixth grader going to middle school. We have a phenomenal staff here. And I feel and feels very well prepared. Going into seventh grade. He did have the opportunity to be on student council for two years. And he absolutely loved it, I think he's thriving here and he absolutely, from a social perspective, he's doing phenomenal. From an academic perspective, he's doing great. And I'm just very pleased with the education that he's received here as a parent that worked here when he started grade two. He also came from an excellent elementary school system in Washington DC. And it was a difficult decision for me, honestly, to come to a school that was this small from an, from an elementary school that had over eight hundred students. Um. That had over eighty million dollars invested in the school that had everything special that you can possibly imagine. But I think he received a better education here than he did there. I would love to take your question.
I, I just want to leave with a couple comments, please.
I'm so sorry, we have like.
There's still no answers for us though.
If you would write down your questions, I'd be happy to pass them.
I will, absolutely, thank you very much.
I wanted to show you that, but. School committee has moved on.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd be happy to.
And thank you. So moving on to the examination and payment. Bills and you're all welcome to stay. May I please have a moment?
I'll email this. Thank you, Tonya, thank you, everyone, thank you, you guys are wonderful.
Thanks.
Oh, you could say. Thank you, thank you.
You're going to be out.
Okay, Madam Chair, uh, with respect, I would ask the member of this school committee to, uh, take a motion to approve fifty five thousand, one hundred and fifty nine dollars and fifty six cents. Uh, which is the total for the invoices for the four eleven twenty three, um. Bill roll and it is extremely typical, a lot of, of learning materials, um. Foods. Out of district, uh, tuitions. One of our bus companies bills, um, and, uh, we have our electric bill, which I am thrilled to see is in. One of the bills is less than three thousand dollars, if you notice.
It did.
And, um. Nothing else, oh, excuse me, uh, one of our consultants, uh. Randall, uh, Priscilla send is eight hundred hours, she provides, uh, psychological services and testing for the district.
Glad to hear you. I'll make the motion to approve the goal and amount of five thousand, one hundred and fifty nine dollars and fifty six cents. I'll send the motion moving soon. Olive Mayber, I, I.
Thank you very much.
So moving on to the super attendance report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item six A is the base site recycling rebate, rebate program report and I do this, uh, about annually. Uh, the first is a flyer that explains what happens to the things that go into our big white boxes in the driveway. And the second sheet, uh, is the, uh, total for, um. The school district student activity account. Gets, uh, funds. To be used by the staff to support the student activities. So basically what we're doing is taking people's old cloth. And clothing and making it into educational supportive funds and, uh. I s- I, I signed up for this pretty soon after I got here, it had been done in, in the district I came from. Uh, the numbers are obviously very different. But, uh, it's important to, for the school committee to know that in the, uh, calendar year two thousand twenty two. Six hundred sixty seven dollars and seventy five cents because of the, uh. Uh, discarded clothing and garments and other items, uh, went into the student activity account, uh, so. It's a really positive thing.
I frequently donate it.
Yeah, me too. It's so convenient.
It's so, yeah, it is, that's, that's a great, um.
Madam Chair, with your permission, I'd like to defer to, uh, strangers for the principals report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, and a brief report for you this evening in the area of teaching and learning. Uh, kindergarten registration is rolling along, I've been sending emails out to folks who haven't registered, but we have. Students who are, uh, age appropriate for kindergarten. And we're now up to twenty one students, uh, registered. Uh, typically, we get a lot of registration over the summer, but with the current, you know, discussion around class sizes, I want to make sure that we have a. Solid idea that we will have that number, uh. My last report, it was two students who are not in the, not in our school who had registered. So that leaves, um, six in our preschool who haven't registered yet. Um, and so that they seem to me to be likely registrants, um, so.
So twenty one plus.
Plus, but we're waiting on six more in the preschool and maybe four out of what they say the wild. You know, uh, might be registering as well at home. So, uh, so, so that's where kindergarten registration, um. No deadline, of course, parents are asking, oh, I'm sorry, I'm late, but no, no deadline, I'm just asking folks to tell us what they know as soon as they can. Uh, MCAT is moving along smoothly, we had our second day of fourth grade today, uh, ELA. I think the students are taking it seriously, we're not having any students who are refusing, who are, um, you know. Going through it quickly, we're not having that issue, so I'm really proud of them and proud of their teachers. Uh, and happy to be here at the school, uh, taking part and, uh, I'm proffering as well. So that we can keep our special ed services on track. So, um, we're, we're able, I'm able to plug in and relieve folks to be able to go to what they need to do so that we're not overly burdening the, uh. Overall educational system. Regarding volunteer program started off, we've had a great kickoff with that, the, I know the volunteers are really enjoying it and the, the classes are. Uh, taking part in, uh, I think really appreciating the opportunity to get outside, starting to put their peas in. Making, uh, structures to grow their peas on and tying it into the curriculum, so that'll continue this week. We've got some warm weather coming up and, um, I guess some heavy rain on Sunday, so that'll help get things going. Under community enrichment, uh, we had a wonderful movie night on Thursday and I want to say thanks to Ms. Edmonds, Ms. Schindler. Also Ms. Delicio and Ms. Howard coming out to, to support the students, making a great event. And, uh, you know, the students don't have a whole lot of opportunities to get together socially after school in this kind of setting, uh, in an elementary school. So, uh, th- these are special for them and, uh, it's nice that we are able to provide that. There is concession two is starting off, uh. Really nicely, I heard a great comment from a third grader trying to talk another student into. I heard a great comment from a third grader trying to talk another student into attending uh and how much he appreciated uh the the movement class that they have. So I I see probably thirty students or so registered again. Uh we had them outside for their little snack break after school, and then they they came in after fifteen minutes of that. Teachers had a chance to refresh, and we're ready for that um two-thirty to three-thirty enrichment session. So that's going on nicely, thanks to the grant funding um from, I believe, Esser. Is that right, Mr. Parentozzi?
Yes.
Yes.
So you have a federal support grants. There's three levels of them from the COVID-nineteen, uh the trillion-dollar federal money.
Great. Yeah, so it's it's well-attended, and mostly I would say K to three is the is the main uh group that's involved. Finally, I wanna say thanks to uh Mr. Robert Kuzak, longtime supporter of the Johnson School and resident of the of uh Nahants. Uh he had the Coast Guard come out again uh to visit with the sixth graders, talk about their careers, uh share their experiences, and the sixth graders had to have an opportunity to share some of the work that they've been doing in class. So that's one of the types of experiences I believe our um parents are referencing tonight. Um but there wasn't really a reason that I couldn't shift to another grade level, uh given the opportunity. And just for upcoming events, I I just have the uh the MCAT dates in there for you. Um we are getting ready for Giddingsbury dress and Memorial Day parade, uh so those things are on the horizon. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Moving to the facilities update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh our telephone system is uh functioning well. Uh we had a couple of last-minute, and I kind of um misnomer that because the telephone's already the main part of it. But it's a system that also incorporates the bell system, bell schedule, and it also incorporates the loudspeaker system. Uh at our last meeting, we had two minor, relatively, three month, relatively minor issues, both of which have been fixed. So uh at the next school committee meeting, you will see a substantial invoice uh being paid. Um a lot of that money is uh is approximately forty-three thousand dollars. A significant portion of it is being paid with um fiscal twenty-two encumbered money. I knew we would need the system. Uh unfortunately, I the initial estimate was not what it turned out to be, probably never is when you're building construction. Uh so we have the funds in other places, which I'll explain later when I talk about the budget. The cafeteria rooftop unit, if you're around at approximately eight o'clock on Tuesday morning next week, you might wanna stop by the Johnson School and see a very massive crane that will be lifting uh the old unit off the roof and putting the new unit on the roof. And we also will have a roofer on um standby, because once they move the old unit, uh we're gonna have the roof under it inspected, and if it has to be repaired, we will do so. So that we make sure that it's uh there's no leaks. Uh that money is unbudgeted. The cost is fifty thousand two hundred fifty dollars. If you remember, I uh reported that to you a couple of times. I went out for a second bid on that uh and was able to get it about ten thousand dollars less than the previous low bidder. Uh but once again, um I talked to uh town manager and the town fiscal director. So I believe we may have unspent funds to cover it. And if not, then they have uh committed reserve funds to it to make sure that it this is exactly the kind of thing that um when it was this time last year. When we had the budget, we had no idea that the system could fail, so we couldn't predict it. So this is exactly the kind of thing that the reserve fund is set up to do. But it may not be necessary. We'll see.
So moving on to staff survey update. So once we give an update, we had a wonderful ninety percent response rate, which I was so happy with. Because sometimes it's difficult getting people to respond to the survey. The results were distributed amongst the school committee and to Kevin and twenty late last Friday night. So I wanna give everyone an opportunity to look at the results, considering that many people celebrated disturb over the weekend. And then collectively as a group, we're going to sit down and talk about what the school does well and areas that we need to. So thank you to the teachers that took the time um here here heard, and it's greatly appreciated. So moving on to the therapy dog program update. Uh I don't know if you want to speak to that.
Um I, we, therapy dog came back again for another visit, and it was successful. Um it's it really is amazing dog to have just welcoming strangers in the hallway. It it has no fear, it doesn't bark, it's just such a friendly little beagle, I think, mixed beagle. And it really does have an impact, great impact, not only on the students, but also the staff. Um and it's it's wonderful to, you know, have in the school, and I wanna say thanks to Ms. Edmonds for, you know, adding it to our mental health you know, program.
Thank you. So moving on to new business. I don't have my reading glasses on tonight, I apologize. Tier focus. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Whatever it may say, it's good news. So in your packet labeled at eight A, you have a letter from um the tier focus monitoring review chairperson and the assistant director of the DESE Office of Public School Monitoring. Over the last multiple months, the administration, unbeknownst to the staff, who were focused on teaching and learning as they should, we have been communicating with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education a plethora of data reports. Examples. And then in March, they visited us and um actually went through the school, looked at the school, checked out the facilities, uh reviewed our um s- student files, reviewed our uh special education files. So we are tier one. That is the highest tier that a school can have based on its success with MCATs. Basically, other, there are other factors, but it's it's basically how you perform on the MCATs. Tier one um and it means that we get the least rev- look, review, audit by the state. Because you're tier one, they make the assumption that you're doing a lot of things right. And of course, we're the seventy-nine percentile of all middle schools and elementary schools. So that's why the report that you look at says tier one. I wanted to explain that. It could have said it's it's down to four. Okay? So in addition to the letter, which basically says that um they did the tier one uh tiered focus monitoring, also known as TFM. The department monitored special education and civil rights to determine your district's compliance with laws and regulations. And I wanna highlight the second paragraph. We are pleased to tell you that the department has found your district to be in compliance with all of the criteria monitored during the review, and no corrective action is required at this time. That is extremely rare. Um usually, there's one, two, you know, no matter where you go. And then, of course, what I did is for your review, I attached the summary of the compliance criteria findings. And so the first document is English language learning, and that's uh known as the Civil Rights Review. And uh because of our lack of English language learning programs, because we have no need, the only thing they really um check on that is whether or not we give parents a chance to sign up for English language learning if they need it. So they looked at our policy, they looked at our registration packet. Um they looked at um the details that we asked for from parents. You know, um language spoken in the home, you know, is there someone in your home who speaks limited English learning? And that was obviously all in in order. Then the second packet is the tier one, level one um universal standards review, and that was, of course, much more uh detailed. And if you go down to about the seventh page, you will see, let me see the page. You will see that a a grid that has an enormous number of standards. So what you see is the special education standards that are implemented, the civil rights standards that are implemented, and then if you go down to the next three boxes, partially implemented, non-implemented, none. Exactly where we wanna be. And then there were two standards that were not applicable because they compete in ice. Uh one of them, for example, was in your um interest classic athletic program. Do you follow these guidelines? And of course, we can't do that, because we don't have it. So I am very proud and very pleased and very thankful for the work that goes into the education here at the um Johnson School, which kind of reflects some of the dialogue this evening. Um to uh make that report public. And Madam Chair, I spoke briefly with the staff today about it, and I will distribute these to the staff, but as you know, I I'd like you to see them before anyone else. So if you have any questions about it, um please let me know. We did very, very well. Um Debbie Canal assisted us. Debbie uh is our former special education director, who was here for five years, I believe. And uh she uh was the primary interface with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the pay-per-lick. Uh in terms of the visit, uh the current special education director, Mary DeGuardia, and Kevin were the primary uh people during their actual onsite visit.
Congratulations. That's great, Madam Chair. Congratulations to all the teachers. Yeah, so great. So thank you for all of the teachers out there.
Yep.
Moving on to budgets.
Okay. Uh I didn't wanna wait until the next quarter, wait your report, talk to you about budget. Uh on the sixth of April, I sent you a document that detailed the uh that known expenditures and projected expenditures. What's happening this year that's a little bit different? If we we have students who have unique transitions, in my in my experience, relatively unique transitions, to different special education settings that are expensive. Um we have a student who was in a charter school. And during the IUP meeting they had recently, it was determined that that placement is not meeting the child's needs. We have a student who was at uh Swanscott High School. That the same exact thing is true. The IUP meeting was was such that it was determined by the team that a different placement. And then we had a third student who was at Essex Tech who uh needs a uh an intensive seven-day-a-week, three-hundred-sixty-five-day-a-week placement. They um put a huge strain on the uh special education budget, both tuition and um transportation. So if you remember, I outlined it all for you. The good news is that we have um about fifty-five thousand, uh I had the number right for me. Uh the circuit breaker um which I can apply. I also applied for what's known as extraordinary relief. Well, interestingly, uh I wanna try to explain this clearly. Because the three students who are high-cost students that we didn't have, that we weren't paying for last year, because it wasn't a full year of cost, it didn't break the threshold of forty-seven thousand dollars per year. Even though it's extremely high per day and per week, per month, but it didn't meet the DESE annual threshold. So those students, tho- those costs will be put into the annual circuit breaker request in the summer. And then this time next year, I will, we will once again apply for extraordinary relief. And the good thing about extraordinary relief is you get it right away.
So we don't qualify for it directly.
We do not. And the reason is because even though, I I'm gonna pick a number out of the hat, even though in a hundred-and-eighty-day-a-year, a five-hundred-dollar-a-day student would break the threshold, there we don't have a hundred-and-eighty days of service for the these three high-cost students. But I gave it a shot anyway. So that's a factor. In your packet, um I want you to look at the last page of the budget. If I may direct you. You see that we have spent thirty-one point five-seven percent of the funds. So what I want you to do is disregard that because um what we haven't spent is the third payment to Swanscott. So that one point four-one-two million dollars left over is really eight sixty-six three. So what I did with Chris is I went through all of the bills that we have outstanding. All of our salary accounts, all the things that we're gonna have to pay, we estimated it, you know, utilities, et cetera. And we're not gonna make it. However.
I do know, however.
There's always a however, with 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 finances and make. What we have not done yet is we have not entered our registered transfers. What that means is that we have been paying um everything out of our general fund with maybe a minor exceptions. So what we're going to do, as we do every year between now and then, or the end of this of of June thirtieth, is we're going to take, for example, the Esser money that Mr. Andrews mentioned. We have eighty-five thousand dollars sitting in an Esser account. We're gonna go back to the Esser grant that we wrote, look what we've paid with, out of the local funds, and do a journal entry. So to take the money out of, let's say it's ten thousand dollars, making it up. We're gonna take ten thousand dollars, take it out of the Esser account, which is locked in, that's a separate, that's not in. None of these monies that I'm talking about are in this, on this sheets. They're all on separate sheets. One for each account. It's called.
They haven't been used.
They haven't been used. Some, a little bit has, but not a lot. So we have the Esser money, we have the Title IV money, we have the circuit breaker money, which I just told you I I need to spend. Um and it's my opinion that once we do And it's my opinion that once we do that. We'll be okay, we'll be fine, we'll be in the black. Even after paying for the fifty thousand dollar. Item on the roof. I don't want to go to the um. Fincom for a reserve fund transfer. Because we do have money in these accounts. And I just don't think, you know, with all the pressure that the town is under. Uh would you, you know, how how expensive everything is. Uh I I. I'm not comfortable with that, I mean, if we can pay for it in another way. And not go for a transfer, I I'm much more comfortable with that. And in long term, in terms of the school district finance committee would be. Very comfortable with that and very supportive, because we do it that way. However, as I told you, the town manager and the finance director have said, we have the public with funds at the end, the. Fifty thousand dollars. For the um. H track. Would be appropriate for a reserve fund transfer. But I I think we're gonna be okay. It's a little tighter than I typically like, but those expenses were totally unforeseen. Okay?
You're a magic worker.
Not really, you just have to, you know.
Move money.
When you come from, seriously, when you grew up in a home like mine. You know, with. Very little of everything, you know. But my father always said, you know, a few twenty hour bills somewhere. So I'm I'm comfortable that we're going to be fine um. And of course, you will be the first people to know, actually, the finance director will be the first person, you'll be the two through six.
Um Tony, can I ask a couple of questions about the budget?
Sure.
Other than the big, big, big stuff, this is small, small, small stuff. Under school committees, um we um. What do we spend four thousand dollars?
You spend four thousand dollars. On um.
On membership to the master.
Member, membership and audit.
Oh, our contribution. And then the other one was, at least one side. We haven't spent eighty or just shy of eighty thousand dollars in school health under regular full-time employee, you know, under. Permanent salaries.
You know, I made that same. Mistake, and I went to Chris and I said, what's going on? If you, it it's just interesting the way the software package prints it out.
Okay.
If you go to the line below it.
Yep.
That's what we've spent.
Okay.
So the budget was seventy-eight thousand.
Yep.
Nine seventy-nine, you spent. Fifty, I don't, I have no idea why it's on three different lines.
Yeah, it just looks like it's two different, um, cause it's oh oh zero, oh 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 three, so I thought it was.
I did exactly the same thing, so we have expended fifty-six, four, twelve, ninety, and we have twenty-eight percent of the.
Yeah, it just looks, it looks like we haven't spent a hundred percent of the.
That's right, it looks like we haven't touched that money, I was, I was very happy.
Right, I know, we have like eighty, yeah, great. And uh do we have salary, it's looks like we've got salaries for aides. Uh teachers' aides.
Yes.
And we just, it's hiring wise, we haven't hired them, we don't need them, or. Huh? Right, so I wondered like why we haven't spent the twenty.
We simply haven't. Used that account.
Okay.
That line there.
Yeah. I saw where the other.
So for example, let me give you an example. Madam Chair, one minute, I'll find my way to this paper. If you look at the line that we are paying the spent salaries out of.
Yep.
It's down to seventeen point eight eight percent. Left.
Yep. Let's see it, just.
We have. Twenty. I find it. We have. Thirty point nine seven percent of the salaries that still pay to those individuals.
Yeah.
So we're gonna be fourteen percent short.
Uh, okay.
So we'll tr- so we'll start taking money from the other account.
Right, we're also trying on substitute dollars too.
Substitute salaries is.
Over. Right? Yeah.
Way over.
Yeah. Okay. Um la- la- I said last one, I lied. Um and we haven't had to do, we haven't had to use evaluation money this year for um site or spend.
We are taking uh, we're taking that out of uh contracted services account.
Got it, okay, great.
For example, you paid, you were authorized eight hundred hours today for evaluations, we're just not using that line.
Great.
To be candid, what we tried to. My style, you try to. Use as few line items. Because every time you use a line item, you gotta enter twelve numbers. You know, and you know, once you.
Getting tired of counting, huh?
Yeah, and then if you remember the transfer sheets I gave you. How, you know, how complex they are, you move here to here to here, so what we try to do is use up lines. And then we we try to do that all frankly. Most of the time, right uh in June, a lot of times when the sentences are gone. And because it's very time soon. But. You know, I've been doing this so long, and Chris has been doing this so long, you can kind of look at it, project it. So. If you look at the teachers, I'll give you an example, if you look at the teacher's large account, there's six hundred thousand dollar one. We've, we have thirty-five point three percent left, and we only need uh. About twenty-six percent. Now, that's not a. Big difference percentage wise, but it's an almost seven hundred thousand dollar line item, so that's forty or fifty thousand dollars. So that money will be distributed, for example, the substitute salaries will probably come out of there.
Right.
All the year-end bonuses will come out of there.
Yeah.
I don't know when he had to break them, but it's all in.
Eleven. I had to say something.
And we will have one more quarterly report.
Have a town meeting coming up, yes.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just put that on the uh agenda to remind everybody to block it into your calendars, it's Saturday, and it's typically ten A M. And for those of you who have lived in town a long time, I. Don't want to remind, I I want to remind you that the voting is on a different day now, so because historically, people just came. A little bit early and voted and then went to town meeting, but it's. It's in April.
So is there any other committee business that we wanted to discuss?
Okay, are there any announcements?
Madam Chair, I have one. Bit of committee business from today with uh if I may. As you know, because I emailed you. Uh we're looking at the twenty-seventh. Of April. As. Uh date to meet with the Swanscott School Committee to discuss um our upper grades. I don't know two things. So I wanted you to know that right now I'm not aware of A, what time.
Six.
Six.
That's the time of the meeting.
But that's the time of their meeting, and I don't know if.
Get a sense of where we are in the agenda.
I don't know if they're gonna suspend the meeting, they're gonna do the entire meeting, they're gonna postpone the meeting, I. And so I asked that question. And I also have had several conversations with the uh superintendent. And Pam and I. Are going to. I believe offer a school committee in Swanscott. The alternative. Of making that an executive session. Because it's um negotiations. Which. The public, there there's a phrase and uh I should have written it down. I actually gave Pam the phrase, it's the, it's a uh, it's a meeting. That is a negotiation with non-union. That the public nature of the meeting may be detrimental to the public body.
Oh, okay.
And basically, what it means is that if the two school committees were to just determining. What you were gonna do. You know, the finances of it, you know, the the circuit rates, fifth grade, and they were public there.
Easily derailed.
It may. It may get in the. It may delay the conversation somewhat. And since they're the host district, I respectfully suggest that. Their school committee should make that determination. So it may be public and it may not. Okay?
I did have a question about the finance part of it, I wasn't sure what you were gonna bring to the table. I guess, in discussing the options, and we need to have any. Yeah, we need to have a proposal of what. You would like to offer, like what we're currently offering, like I just wasn't sure what that process would look like.
We have never sent middle school students. So it's random.
Yeah, well, we do send.
Well, that's not a great, yes. We sent somebody.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Yeah, we we do not send. Fifth and sixth graders. And we do not pay a per student rate, if you remember.
Yes, that's right.
We are on a, a second year of a contract, which has a beginning amount. And then the. Annual increases to an eight percent, which. Very good for us.
When, when is that agreement firing?
Uh fiscal twenty-seven.
Okay, that's what I.
Five year. So what? The current school committees will be. Discussing is, you know, like multi-layered, A.
Right.
We all know there's one.
Yes, there's one, yeah.
B. What? Impact does the school committee, the superintendent, and the principal think? Our students going over there will have. And then translating that into a dollar figure.
Yeah.
My own belief is that it would not be unreasonable to say there's no new cost involved.
Yeah, I know, I. I think about that, and I'm like, is that like so insulting, but then I'm like, well, what do they do, there's just five kids in the school, it's not many, but what do I, what do I know?
I'm not suggesting that our position would be that we don't think we should give them any money, I'm simply, the way I said it is.
It's all gravy.
Yeah, right, yeah.
There's no new cost involved, it's five students, or. If uh one of our guests is right, ten students here in two grades.
And there's. There's eight classes, sections, so like, that's not even one per section, right?
That's right.
Right, so.
Starting with a number of seventeen.
Right, exactly.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, yes, of course.
Um, I'm sorry, I want to make sure I understand. That what I heard is we pay, the contract is set with an. Increase of a percentage to pay. And we don't pay, it's not numbers based, is that correct? Meaning then. Okay, so. So that's interesting, so there's no numbers in the contract that. Depict what our minimum or maximum number is that goes over there for seventh and eighth?
That's right, it's, the contract has zero student numbers in.
Okay. Thanks.
Change, right, Mr. Parentati, from the previous contract?
It's. Yes, the first contract I negotiated, I negotiated out the per pupil cost.
That's right.
Because what was happening. Is, well, take, take this year for example, it's a perfect example. We have. Sixteen sixth graders going over. And if we were paying her per pupil. We, we only have ten seniors leaving. So the number would be going up six. So at, let's ballpark it at fifteen thousand per. That means that our budget would have gone up. Six times, right, seventy-five thousand, ninety thousand dollars just for that.
Yeah.
As compared to the consistency of. This number, two and a half, two and a half, and frankly, both Fincoms preferred it that way.
Yeah. Yes, it's easier for the budget.
Right, so what this will mean. Is um. There's no groundwork. To debate this. Although I'll do a numbers play. And suggest that um, you know, over the life of the contract, what's going to be happening is. The per pupil cost to Nahad is going to be dramatically improving and going up.
Yeah.
For.
Couple of years.
About three years, four years, and then it'll start to go the other way. So there. I'm hopeful that the amount of funds. Requested by Swanscott. Would be. Uh low compared to the per pupil cost.
And you're gonna have all of that. Yeah. So I think it's a good point, though, we don't want to go in totally unprepared.
Yeah. Well, I think there's, uh, and we don't, I think having some kind of a. Thinking document or, you know, something on paper, we might just add the discussion and we ask.
We should have provided. Have the numbers that you have.
Right.
The numbers.
Yeah.
Of the classes, I.
That was really, that was really. Our, one, one clarification I want to make is, I think, are we asking? For short, long, short or long term, like, short. Are we?
Right now.
Short, short. So we're asking them to change the contract for one year.
I don't know.
Yeah, do you?
Why wouldn't, like, why wouldn't we consider doing this for more or longer term?
It's just too, that that's a community.
I think that's a bigger, yeah.
Community buy, especially. And 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 it's not to say that we can't do that, because I think it's just blown up, some of those questions, like, I was saying, like, right now, we're doing the small. Very tiny margins, and then to move forward, looks like that would be right.
So the thought right now is, oh, so go ahead, Deanna.
No, I'm sorry, I'm with you, Beth, I I was just gonna say, I think. It would be helpful to make it known that we don't want this to just be a short-term. Fix, and that we're interested in continuing this con- these conversations for the future, right, but we just don't know. Who exactly needs to help us with it and how we are going to make that happen from like a community perspective.
Well, yeah, we don't know what the community feels about it.
Exactly, because what it's a community is up in arms over it, and doesn't want this changed. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
No, I think it sounds like, yeah, I I just, I I think it would be helpful to say, like, we don't necessarily. We don't necessarily think either way it needs to be like only for this upcoming year, we would like it to be in. An opportunity to continue to discuss.
But we have to, we have to decide, yeah, we have to make it, we do have to, Deanna, only because we have this pressing thing at this time, and I.
Oh, oh, yes, right, we have to make a decision for this upcoming fall.
Discussion about it, but we just have to do it in a different way and transparent way.
Right. Chair, I find, more than likely, the M O U. Would. Be. Very specific. About what it covers. And then typically, the attorneys agree on language for. How it can be extended.
Yeah.
Cancelled, changed.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's typically the way it's done.
Let me ask a question to Quinn, are we, um, is there an appetite on this school committee right now? That we would talk about a way that we could post a community um feedback session around the idea of maybe the sixth grade. Or the fifth and sixth grade um to Swanscott. For longer, on a more permanent basis.
I I think we we should, I just don't know what.
Yeah, question mark on the format, but like, are we, are we gonna engage? Yeah, question mark on the format, but like, are we, are we gonna engage in figuring that out?
I think we should, yeah.
Okay.
The pressing issue of the year is.
Yeah, yes.
Yes, that's why I want it separate, yes.
Yes, and and.
Yeah.
Yes, cuz I do think if we're gonna, if we wanna see. There is no better time.
Right.
Than the time where you've had to do something to figure out if you, if this might be actually a better thing, right? Um and how much traction there is in this school committee, how much education we need to do on how that thing may be a better thing. And it's, well, there is fact about it, right?
Right.
Yeah, and so I think like, if not now, then when? You should, I personally think we should explore, like, rip the bandaid off. Explore the heck out of it, make sure everybody wants to um give an opinion about it, give an opinion about it.
Yeah.
And then make a decision about whether we wanna pursue it, pause it, or end it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure, for sure, and you know, I think.
And this is independent of the immediacy of the twenty-three, twenty-four, sixth grade.
Yes, yeah. Personally, I'm in a cage in Patina on this, and that, like, I'd like to get this first thing. Be because as you can see right now, like, it's, you know, talking about the sixth grade only, and and then that, you know, is. Feeling different for some of the fifth grade parents.
Yeah.
You know, so for the incoming fifth grade parents, so. Yeah, I think, you know, we need to be clear about what we're we're facing right now, where our goals are right now, and focus on.
Yeah, there's there's a, there's a counter argument to ripping the bandaid off. And the counter argument would be. Fifth and sixth grades are unique. In size and. Complement. And. May not be representative of.
Long term.
Anything in the future.
Yeah.
That's one, the other one is, I would seriously recommend the school committee consider hiring a consultant.
Oh, yeah, I agree, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, that's what you're coming up.
To be driving this conversation.
Yeah, and it's. You know, it's probably between five and ten thousand dollars, you know, MASC or NESTEC. New England School Development Council.
And a consultant who assesses um. The pose.
On, yes.
The.
And run the meetings.
And and drive the conversation, which was really helpful, that housing, I think, you had as a as an example, so. We had an open community forum in early March, and it was run by um an external consultant, they got up there, they did a presentation. Um and then all of us that were on the committee, um there were exercises that were done afterwards, where encouraged people to come around and have. Open discussions in terms of what do they see the future of the project? Yeah, and so I envision something similar, we're gonna have this conversation, we want. We want everyone to feel included.
Yeah.
That we're not operating in a vacuum, we want as much feedback as we can possibly get.
Yeah.
And. This isn't my wheelhouse, so I would be able to put forward a consultant, trying it and we.
Yeah.
Yeah, the the first thing a consultant does is they meet with you. They, you know, they speak about. Your goals or your lack thereof, you know, your. You know, it's, um and then uh having worked with multiples. They lay out a plan and present you with a document that's a plan, so for example. How the consultant interfaces with the board of selection. Is and the finance committee members is very different. Than just having a discussion. There's different questions, there's different things. Uh each of those groups wanna know, you know, for example, the finance committee wants about hard numbers, right?
Yeah.
You you and the parents, you know, education. You know, curriculum, you know, so they craft a plan that addresses. A subsets of the community in a different manner. Um and in a different way, you know, a general survey for everybody and then the specificity, and then they they craft a report.
I think that that's so great, that that's a possibility, because I'm just trying to conceptualize how, because everybody has their experiences and opinions. And then, and I was foreseeing that it would just be a big form, written piece of opinions.
You know, sort of like be able to really deal with.
Something like.
But it's a great.
Be able to really pull down some facts that then you can, you know, provide, I think is.
But I think so. I, yeah, I am too, I think we are talking about two different things, so if I can pull it out, I think. I hear a little, I hear a little bit in you, definitely in you, you're saying about consultants that. It's for facilitation to, right, and make sure of all of the pieces of what would constitute really good substantive, faulty, situational decision we've been having, right? What I hear, a string of what you're saying, Gina, maybe, and definitely what I'm saying is, I'm looking for expert. On uh child development, SEL and education. To study the current situation here in the Han and in Swanscott, and give some guidance, some educated guidance for parents. So that it isn't an open, everybody can, I mean, it should everybody give an opinion. But that it's guided by some good factual data and knowledge about what is good for kids.
Yeah.
Right, because I some of. One thing that we haven't talked about, that I did wanna, you know, lift somewhere, is that. We are charged, Tony and Kevin are charged with making the best decisions they can. As educators, seasoned educators for this school, kids, right, that is their job. And our job as volunteers is to support them in doing it, hold them accountable, hire you, right, and um. And uh and make sure we have enough money to do so and money step up, right, that's our our job. The parent's job is to give input and partner with teachers to make sure that um there is a partnership that supports the kid, you know, doing the best they can. It isn't the parents, the parents. Myself included as a parent, don't get to sort of guide educational policy and practice. Like, what parents do are um elect us, right, to be their representatives. And then we do the best we can to support you, right, and then if, you know, if the superintendent, any superintendent. Is not making parents happy, they have two choices, get rid of the school committee that elected the superintendent, we enter the superintendent search, or leave the school system, right? Some choices, but, you know, like, and I just. These lines got a little blurred for me in the first conversation.
Yeah.
Because it felt like parents angry, don't do it. And it may be that we don't do it, but we can't do it because if. Parents are angry, we have to preserve the right for the educators to educate, and if the educator said, this is absolutely the best thing for kids' education. That then we, and and you're not saying, right, you're not, you're saying it it could be fine, um you're not saying it is the most fine. Right, but you might say something's the most fine thing, and then we have to make, our job is to make sure. That we create the conditions for them to do that, and that may be making sure that we can intersect with parents that either get parents information. Create a different process, get some input, but it doesn't mean throwing anything out just because parents are angry about it, especially parents who are not educators. Right, some of them are, right, but but some of them are not. And so I just wanna make sure we're preserving this, it's just like preserving the meeting, like you were like.
Yes.
There is a reason why there is public comment in a certain way, and it isn't supposed to be a back and forth, and I participate in the fact that I should not have, um. There's a reason for that, and it's not equity, the sort of voice, maybe should get done, right, and so I just.
Yeah.
There are places where process is pretty critical, and I just wanted to put that to be sure, A, if I'm wrong, y'all should definitely jump on that right now, right, but. I don't think I.
What, you know. Yes, what you, what you just said. Defines the need for the plan.
Yeah.
Which will have, you know, it's like when you build a school. You don't start with bricks, you start with the education plan. You know, do you wanna have, you know, do you wanna start your middle school in fourth grade, fifth grade, you're right, you start with the plan. And it's very similar, the plan of a consultant will have, will have an educational piece. It will have a financial piece. It will have a process piece, so let's think about process for a minute. You are empowered by elect, the electorate. To make decisions for the school committee like this. But you may wanna bring it to town meeting, have a non-binding vote, you may, I'm not saying you should, I'm saying you may, a non-binding vote at town meeting, it's to find out what everybody wants. Who knows, I mean, the the school's been here forever. And if you're changing the the makeup of the school dramatically, you may wanna get. Different levels of input from different people, as broad as the town meeting. And as finite as the town manager.
So can I? No, I just before I forget, so can I ask though what Beth was. Saying, also trying to get at, is that the consultant that you're implying will gather all the information, but will this person be an educational?
This person will be a, in my opinion, this person will be a consultant. Who deals with educational matters on a regular basis. A full gamut. NESDEC is the one that's most, the New England. Educational Development Corporation is the one that's most expert at. Things that involve education and um. Growth and development of the population, the number of students. And findings, they are really good at that.
I'm glad you asked that, so that's not what I personally am interested in, I want the biggest expert on middle school. In communities like Swanscott and. And I want them to give us guidance on what the, what is the best scenario for kids.
In terms of the configuration.
Yeah, in terms of like, given these times. And size and what's going on in our school systems and Swanscott's results are, and the whole gamut of SGL academics. I want somebody to come in and help educate us about where, you know, give us advice, like. About how to, how to think about the pros and cons of kids' role over there, because for me, I don't care if there's a hundred kids in the kindergarten. If it is a better situation for sixth graders to stay here, then they should stay here, and if it's a better situation for sixth graders. At this time in history, in these communities, to go over to Swanscott, then they should go there. And I want a little bit of external advice about that, because I think that, A, even though there are people. Here in this room and in the school that certainly are experienced educators and been led a very, uh, an opinion, we are biased because. Of who we are here, you either work for the school or you live in the Han, or both, or you're a parent here, right, or you love Swanscott or you hate Swanscott, or it's all biased. And bias doesn't mean bad and stiff, right, so you get somebody from outside who deeply is steeped in middle school knowledge that can help us think about it, and we might still say, eh, we disagree, we're going this way. But it'll be, you know, it'll be input that I think is needed, and I really felt that at the last meeting. And I think it's gonna be helpful, that's what I'm craving, and then I think we can get, you know, somebody can probably facilitate it for a month, you know, a few discussions, I'm playing on this, but. This might be more, yeah.
I mean, it it's a big ask. Do you feel like make your decision necessary for this year? But I feel like, again, there's two separate things, I mean. I think for the long term, that's ultimately.
That's for the long, that's for the long term, that's not for the, we can figure out the short term, right?
That is for the long term. Yeah.
We have a, the short term is sort of the pri- the primatics of five kids, right, that is really driving this. But I think like, I do, you said like it may be better to wait because of numbers, I don't, I think if we're having this conversation in the community because we have to. Let's then, as as we get this resolved, have the other one.
Yeah.
Yeah, how, what would be the best way to have the other?
If I could have some advice, if I could try to clarify what I meant.
Yeah.
When you're trying to deal with somewhere between five and fourteen students in two grades. Is not the time to make a long-term plan.
Right, yeah, right, yes.
Yes.
It's biasing it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because there's no, there's no. Argument that would say keeping those sixth graders and those fifth graders in the school is the best thing for them. I mean, there just isn't an argument for that.
Right, and we don't wanna use that to hijack the larger conversation, totally, I agree, but I just wanna have the larger conversation.
That's exactly. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we can have it this summer, we can have it next fall, you can, when it's all said and done.
I think, you know, I just don't wanna sit here in the same spot next year with the fifth graders, they're here, you know, and like, to to get this consultant on board, you know.
I agree.
What, what would that be, and should we start now?
Yeah.
Um because. Yeah, um.
I just thought, I was thinking about.
Yeah, well, on top of what you had said, you know, the thing that I would be interested to is, is that, you know. Multi-grade curriculum, what that looks like, because we are in a small community, and we might have years that are, you know. Rich with students, and we might have years that are not, but it doesn't mean that just because we have one or the other. That we shouldn't ex- expand and expose kids to their. Exactly, um and so, you know, for me, like, I feel like to. Really maintain the school, that's something that we really should.
And I'm curious, um because this far creates, probably all of us, but. Back in the day when the Han had up to grade eight. How was the decision made to have seven or eight people responsible?
What question?
What?
Went up to ninth.
Up to ninth in school?
Isn't that weird?
Okay.
Really?
Yeah.
How really, so how, when, when did that change? What did it look like? Why?
They went to Lynn English, they used to go to Lynn. Right.
Just curious, what ruled it?
Yeah.
You know, how did that work? Yeah.
Yeah, it could have been any.
And has this, and has this been looked at, like, between now and then, right, like, have people, right, cuz we can't be the first people to think, like. Does this really make sense? Other parents clearly have concerns that their kids now, maybe in high school, should have gone earlier or shouldn't have, so we can't be the first people to think, like. Has it been thought of, you know, cuz like, you know, years and years ago when I was there, there were two grades, two classes per grade. And, you know, and it it. That's just how it was, it was two classes per grade, but it went to six. But I'm just curious, like, as to like, you know, it's almost like, just because it is the way it is, doesn't mean it's the, it's.
Right.
Stay that way.
Yeah, right, right, yeah, it is, and I just think there's an opportunity, and it's.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree.
That's, that's a question.
But to your point, Beth, I tried to do some research in terms of like, what the optimal A configuration.
Yeah.
It is out there, and honestly, it's like, there's nothing current there that I can find, right? It's like all the studies have been done years and years and years ago, and include.
Yeah.
Media or. Yeah, it's it's all, it's, and it's. There is, it, from what I've read, there is no, you know, answer.
Right, I think that's why I'm not thinking that somebody is gonna come in and be like. Here it is, you know.
Well, that's kind of serious, yeah, I think, you know.
I think they could, they could, they have, they come from a base of knowledge, they could study, you know, sort of our schools. And our numbers and our current configuration offer and whatnot, and be able to say, like, given all of these, it feels like the these, yeah, these are the pros and cons for us. So then make a decision, I think it would, it's not gonna change everybody from like, like, and we don't want to, it's a democracy, people. Have to be able to commit and give an opinion even if they don't happen to have an expertise in that area, right, and parents have an expertise in being parents. Um but in in their own kid, but I think like, there were a lot of, there were some opinions that were presented as fact. That the, that were a little far field of, like, definitely some best practice, and um. And God knows, I have my own opinions that are far afield of other best practices, okay, no, this is it, and I spend money, but um, I um, you know. Uh I just said next to somebody in finance, but I, I um, I just, I'm not saying you can't have those, I just think that sometime, I think, having some information about bad parents. Yeah. Yeah.
So in preparation for this meeting on the twenty-seventh, and we have a school committee meeting on the twenty.
Twenty-four, twenty-four.
Yeah.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fourth is one of my.
Yes, yeah, yes.
So right on the twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Two through the twenty.
Right after break.
I suppose we should be adding this to.
Yeah.
Uh or would that be negotiations that we would need executive session?
Sorry.
Do you mean preparations for my meeting, like the discussion, not preparations?
Yes. I think it's preparations for negotiations to have the executive.
In an exact.
Yeah. If you need it, yeah, basically.
Very long, we're saying, I'm sorry.
Yes. I will put that on the agenda and I will. See what I can do about getting you some data, I'll try to make a glue for you for uh. The high school too. Yeah, I can, you can do that. After spending twenty seven of my first twenty eight years in the business of middle schools. Having been in a middle school that started in fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade. And even seventh. I think what you're going to find is. You're gonna find a, a channel. Opinions. This is best for the facility, using the facility best. This could be best financially. This could be best socio-emotionally. This could be best um education. But you're probably not gonna find somebody saying, you know, this.
Across the board, yes, this is a lot of.
This is, this is best. What most people find. Is they have a building, it holds a certain amount of students.
Yeah.
And they make a decision a day about. How many students they can put in the building.
That's what I'm finding.
That's right, that's, I mean, overall, I've read that, and I've actually worked with architects, you know.
Yeah.
And that's what they say, well, you wanna build two buildings or one? Yeah, you know, and you know, um. The decision in Swamp Scott is locked in because they have a middle school that can take more students than it has. Their billion elementary's building, it could not take more grades than up to forty.
Right.
Educationally, fifth grade is very different than every middle school I've ever been in. Fifth grade is not part of the middle school, it's just in the, in the same building. It's usually, um, at, at the most, is one, it's two teachers. One for uh science and math, and one for social studies and and E L A. And so they switch in fifth grade, they typically have a different schedule. They typically have recess and sixth grades may not, although in some, seventh grade definitely doesn't. So, so what you're gonna find is it's basically all over the map.
Yeah.
Kevin, you.
Junior high used to be seventh and ninth, like before we had middle schools, you know, um, yeah, so, and I agree with it.
Right.
Yeah. Right.
What he says, pardon. Terms of all those other considerations. We had a high school here in the Han, in five years, until, it was, we're just big enough, I think it was in the fifties or something.
Yes, it was.
When it was, we had, they had a little, you know, big boom and just enough kids and. The valley, the.
Yeah, post, post World War Two, we're in high school.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
If you think about it, fifth, yeah.
Yeah. That I really.
Nineteen forty-six plus thirteen.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so, it's interesting.
So, Madam Chair, uh, if I may, one more thing, I do wanna announce that we had a paraprofessional resign. And we are in the process of um hiring another. And um. Uh, Hannah Amato. She, we hired her in January, she was a recent graduate. And she chose to resign with a very short notice.
Did she give you those? Okay. Do you have any questions, I suppose?
Yes. It was, and from her position, in my opinion, the inability to get along with a co-ord. Not us, not me. Not any bigger straighter.
Well, we had, I had an interview today. And we have a, we have an applicant that's um qualified as well, put it on the school's front. So, shit, and it's covered for the week, so.
Okay, we have a big issue.
Yep.
Well, I'm disappointed to hear that, I heard really great things about her actually from the kids, so let's think.
She's disappointed to hear it and she heard good things from the kids.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, yeah, maybe, but sorry.
She was in preschool.
Okay, I didn't know where she was, but I had heard positive.
Just preschool.
Sometimes covering other classes.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Yeah. As I will do sometimes.
That's another issue.
Yeah. And we have a new substitute teacher as well.
Yes.
So, uh, that's great, and she's a cert, she was a cert, twenty years uh special ed teacher in Arizona. And she's available five days a week. She's the only substitute that we have, but really five, available five days. So, let's go.
I think I, I, it is, it is disappointing here, but we don't, you don't know the backstory, because we're not in the schools, go back to like. Combinations and our lenses, but I do like. Anything that, there are, there are so many great teachers, anything that helps them be able to like. Be their greatest, you know, um, is obviously like, you know, a support thing. And as a parent, um, you know, watching what uh. Misreceived with our experience, but able to do with. That third grade class, like this is Galileo's best year so far, and I don't mean like, and all of his, his arco work here at the Johnson's been great. Um, so it's not about it, and not doing, you know, the work thing, I'm just saying that. The confidence, like, one thing that I've noticed that both the teachers that I get to work with as a parent this year have. In common is that they both are very competent teachers, right? Which comes from experience. And I think that a, a good parent teacher, and I actually don't know what the parents classroom, it's not a common parent class. Um, but like, it helps, it just helps lift, you know, and we know this need teachers. The, the, the focus to be where the teacher's focused, if it's part of the parents, so. Um, whatever we can do to support the school in creating this relationship is great. But take care of them.
Okay, I know we're all tired, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn? I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at nine fifty.
Eight fifty seven.
I second.
All in favor?
All right.
What time, Madam Chair, is the meeting tomorrow?
Um, Orion and Delia, um, with Marvel Bank.
Thanks for that.
Oh, yeah, sure, it wasn't tricky one to do or not. So, that's debating.